The March 24 Planning and Voting Board Meeting is now in session.
Welcome.
We'll have a moment of silence and then the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands here, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Velazquez, please call the roll.
Senator Barbara DeSecond?
Here.
Senator McCallie? Maria Shepherd?
Here.
Julius Wiegand?
Here.
Brian Colton? Breanna James?
Here.
Andrew Cooney?
Here.
Corvus person.
Any additions or deletions?
Good evening, Jeff Gaglin, Assistant Director of Development. There is one addition to tonight's packet. The meeting minutes from February 11th of 2016 were accidentally omitted from the pack that was sent out, so they have been provided in hard copy form on the day of this meeting. That was the only addition.
Do the board members want to take a moment and read them, or would you prefer just to take them home and we could vote on them next meeting? Any comments? I think we'll give everybody the time to read them at leisure and bring them up at the next meeting, okay? Disclosure by any board members regarding this project? No disclosures? Do we have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Chair.
Yes.
I make a motion that we adopt the agenda as per second.
Okay. Okay. All in favor? Okay. Motion adopted. Any unfinished business?
No, sir.
Okay, all right, moving on to new business.
Tonight in the new business, we have one item, two letter A, an application from Statwens LLC, SP 1513, requesting site plan approval to develop a single-story 7,545 square-foot Dollar General retail store on a 0.64 acre, 28,008 square-foot parcel of land at 3701 Broadway, which is located west of Broadway, south of Silver Beach Road, and north of West 37th Street. At this time, I'd like to ask DeAndre Spradley, our Principal Planner, to provide a presentation on the subject.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. DeAndre Spradley, Principal Planner. The applicant has requested a site plan approval to develop 0.64 acre of commercial land. Currently, it's a vacant commercial building or a drive-through, it's like abandoned drive-through bank building there. They're wanting to build a single-story, 7,545 square-foot Dollar General retail store. Here's a site location map showing where the property is located. Here's an aerial map. This is the existing conditions. This picture here is facing west on Broadway. This is facing north on West 37th Street. And this is facing south on Silver Beach Road. Can't really see it that well on this video, but... And just for reference, that is the Welcome to the City of Riviera Beach sign that is located right there on Broadway. If you were facing Broadway, facing west, that would be the sign there. The adjacent property description and uses to the north, there are commercial uses, and it has a downtown mixed-use, future land use. To the south, it has commercial and single-family uses, single-family residential and downtown mixed-use, future land use. To the east, commercial uses, downtown mixed-use, future land use. To the west, single-family uses, single-family residential, future land use. The subject parcel has downtown mixed-use, future land use. Staff analysis, this particular project is consistent with and compatible to the city's comprehensive plan and land development regulations. Security services such as roads, water, sewer, and garbage collection are currently available to the site. I have a parkin' has been proposed by the applicant. There were no objections from departmental staff, including police, fire, utilities, public works, and the building department. Once it's opened, the store will have a minimum of seven employees. The store hours will be from 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. The current tax value is $393,091. And that's before construction. After construction, the estimated tax value is $600,000. Here is the elevations. The top one is the facade that will be on West 37th Street. And the bottom one will be the one that's going facing Broadway. This is the elevations to the west. And the one at the bottom is the one from the, it's like the rear of the building. Here are some color elevations. The top one will be the one facing West 37th Street. And the bottom will be the one facing on Broadway. Again, this is the west and the north elevation. Here's the overall site plan. In conclusion, staff is recommending to board to consider approving the proposed site plan with the following conditions. A two-year landscaping performance bond for 110% of the value of landscaping and irrigation shall be required before the certificate of occupancy is issued. Construction must be initiated within 18 months of the effective date of the adopting resolution in accordance with Section 31-60B of the City Code of Ordinance. Divolution, site preparation, or land clearing shall not be considered construction. Build permit application and associated plans and documents shall be submitted in its entirety and shall not be accepted by city staff in a partial or incomplete manner. All future advertising must state that the development is located in the city of Riviera Beach. Fees and penalties in accordance with City Code, Section 31-554, will be living against the property owner and/or business for violation of this condition. This development must receive final certificate of occupancy from the city for all buildings and units approved. In five years of the approval of the adopting resolution or the adopting resolution shall be considered null and void, requiring the applicant to resubmit application for site plan approval and re-initiate the site plan approval process. Once approved, the adopting resolution shall supersede any previous site plan approval. Resolutions associated with this property causing serious site plan approval resolutions be null and void. Once approved, city council authorizes city staff to approve future amendments to this site plan administratively, so as long as the site plan does not deviate greater than 5% from originally approved submitter. The developer agrees to modify the existing onsite City of Riviera Beach welcome sign as determined by the city engineer. The applicant is here.
At this time, I can take any questions from the board if you have any.
Board members, any questions? For staff?
Yeah, I have a question. I noticed down here from the handicap spaces that's in front of the building, there are the two spaces.
Yes, sir.
You know, this is a senior citizen area. And we're gonna go there, but we don't want to walk, you know, all the way across in front of the other park or the stuff. So I was wondering, I noticed it was four or five parking spaces in that front of that building. Couldn't they make all those handicaps? I'll make four of them at least.
Well, right now, they meet the minimum requirements that the city does require. So, and then also, they're right at the minimum required parking requirement, so if you did do a handicap stall, it will reduce the number of parking spaces that they have as a whole.
That's why I said if they could get four, you'd still leave the others for five sizes or whoever else has to go in there. But, you know, I, some way I would like to see, even if it's a cross in the front where the others are, put some more handicap parking space within it. We have a lot of senior citizens out here. And we do go shopping. And we'd want to be able to park and, you know, be safe getting into the store. Thank you very much.
Ms. Shepherd?
Just capitalizing on Mr. Williams, and these are applicants?
Yes, ma'am.
Could they speak?
Sure.
Maybe give their opinion of those spaces?
Good evening, for the record. My name is Jonathan Ricketts. I'm the registered agent for Statwens, and Mr. Doug Kinsey here is also the applicant. And DeAndre is correct. We would like to have the latitude and the ability to expand that handicap parking. Our situation is that we are at the minimum that we need for our store residents, store customers. An expansion of those handicap parking stalls to add additional spaces would decrease the number of total spaces within the site. So if we added or converted three of the existing parking stalls, we would only end up with two handicap stalls, which would then reduce our overall number by one, which would, we would need, have to go a different route for approval on that.
The reason why I ask is because in some of these spaces they have for the handicap vans, the big vans that open up, let the wheelchairs out, and then the regular handicap. So are you looking out for the handicap vans? Because they shop too. And I have a friend that's in a handicap van that need that extra space. And if she doesn't have that extra space to get out, she's stuck.
Now, these sites, both of the handicap stalls have access to the five-foot loading space that's adjacent to both of those stalls.
So the van can, what I'm asking, that van can accommodate opening up so the wheelchair could come down? Is this what you're saying?
What I'm telling, yes. And what I'm telling you is that those spaces are in full conformance with Department of Justice for handicap accessibility.
Is there handicap bathrooms in there? Is there bathrooms in there or?
Hi, I'm Doug Kinsey. I'm the applicant here. And yes, there are bathrooms in there, both are handicap accessible bathrooms. They need to accommodate the needs of the challenged folks who might need to use them.
And to piggyback off of that, Ms. Shepherd, that items like that, they will be addressed once they do submit for construction.
Okay. Okay. I think I've got it right now, Mr. Shepherd.
Okay. Mr. Barber, any comment?
Yeah, I have a few. How close will this store be to the intercoastal? Are those boats there in the top right-hand corner?
Yes, sir. I would say that's roughly maybe four to 800 feet, somewhere in there.
And I saw a picture of the city's sign. Is that sign at a border point of the city?
There, yes, sir, it is.
And so if you were coming into Riviera Beach from the north, one of the first things you would see in the city would be a Dollar General?
No, you would see the gas station, that's immediately north of there.
So a gas station, then a Dollar General?
That would be correct.
And I have a question or a few questions for the folks from Dollar General. Will this store have food produce in it?
I'm sorry, would it have a?
Would you sell food?
Yes. And part of their, part of their market is, you know, general household supplies. And Dollar General is one of the largest purchasers of material from Procter &amp; Gamble, Nestle, Coca-Cola, Pepsi products. And just to give you some idea, Walmart has approximately four or 5,000 stores throughout the U.S. CVS has about 7,400 stores, Walgreens 8,400 stores, Dollar General has over 12,000 stores. And they have a unique market in that they provide a very price competitive product, but they provide it in a local neighborhood.
Right. Well, a part of the food produce, would there be meat and/or vegetables?
There would not be fresh foods. There are perishable items there. There's milk, there's ice cream. But the fresh produce is not a line that they currently carry in this, this kind of stores.
And of those perishable items, do you know if any of them consist of GMOs?
That I don't know.
Is there a way we can find that out?
Yes, through the rest of the approval process. We would be glad to provide that information to staff.
Okay. And also, you mentioned that you have about 12,000 stores. What percentage of those stores are in poor, poor neighborhoods?
I don't have the demographics for that or the definition of how we want to define poor.
Well, let me ask you another question.
And just so you know, I'm a local agent here, I'm a local engineer, so my research on Dollar General is just for this particular site plan.
Okay. I see a gentleman behind you, but he hasn't had any of this information?
All right. I don't know specifically, you know, what the designation of poor neighborhood would be, but I've built four of these already and have a couple more approved. And typically, the demographic profile is an average income of 35,000 to 40,000, up to 75,000. The one I'm proposing to build at Blackstaff Arizona has a median income of, I think, about $52,000 in the immediate area around the store. So they're not, they're not selecting what you might be calling as poor neighborhood, they're just trying to find the demographic that fits their, their, their market. And, you know, if you were to set, if you had a neighborhood that was, you know, had a demographic of $150,000, they might shy away from that. They'd rather be in that mid-market area than on the...
And you said you have four stores. With those four stores, what percentage of your sales would you say come from consumers that might be dependent upon government assistance?
I would, I have no idea what that would be. That would be something that Dollar General might be able to provide. I'm a developer of real estate. I try to convince them, if they haven't selected an area, I try to convince them that this would be a good area for store work. And once the, you know, the deal is struck, I develop the real estate if they run the business, if they run the business.
That's all for me.
That's it. Ms. James?
I was just trying to figure out the business that is across the street on the other side of 37th Street where the Dollar General is proposed, right there with the yellow?
The yellow where the, is there?
Yes.
It's like a tire player, I'm sorry, tire pair. I'm sorry, Brownies dive shot.
Yes. What is it, a dive shot?
Dive shot.
A dive shot. Okay. I was just making sure that was an option for additional parking, so that is a...
Yeah, it's a good business.
Good business, okay.
Yeah, and also, the code requires that the parking has to be on site.
On the same side of the street?
Yes.
And the signage is gonna be kept in place?
They may have to, once the constructions start and the developer has already agreed to, they may have to move the footer of the sign a little bit, in my understanding. But they said they will be responsible for that portion of that.
Okay, and you're gonna have just a question. Preference for hiring city residents? Could they at least get it first?
Once again, my knowledge of the operational side of the business is pretty limited, so I don't think I'm qualified to answer that. I don't know if you can have a preferential criteria for hiring folks.
Well, I will tell you this, we are a recommending board, and we could put that as a recommendation. Not to say you have to go with it, but, you know, you, they are trying to bring the business into our city. So we bring your business, hire our people.
Well, I think, I think it goes to say it's a normal, I mean, the first one of these I've built, I built on my great-grandmother's farm, and it's sort of normal to say that the people that work there, the people that live very close to there, I actually, I brought those workers in the store, so, you know, I think by just the nature of the way business works, the location of the store is gonna hire people from the immediate area. So I would...
People help that.
Yeah, a logical conclusion would be that some of the folks would be in Riviera Beach.
Thank you.
A question for staff. I noticed that on the police comment, they were concerned about the, about the egress and exit.
Correct.
And they said they were going to go with the city engineer's recommendation, and I didn't see the city engineer's recommendation.
Well, the city engineer, he did approve of the actual development as a whole, and, you know, via the traffic concerns, he was okay with it.
Does it, since the county governs the traffic, do they sign off on this too?
This particular store, because like the code requires if it's 500 additional trips, then we have to go out to the county and get them to basically do a concurrency review on it. But this particular development is less than 500, so it's not required.
I'm assuming we noticed everybody around?
We did 300 feet?
Okay.
Chair.
Yes.
I had a question about that as well, because that house that sits right there that we can clearly see?
Mm-hmm.
My cousin's home, her property is right next to it, and actually, those two houses were recently demolished because of fire. But anyway, I asked her about this particular project last week, and she said that they did not receive notification.
We sent it out...
Send out, I wonder another day, did we send it out?
Yeah, it was, we definitely sent them out. We did the postcards of 300 feet within the property.
Even Lake Park Residence.
Even Lake Park Residence.
You don't have a date that you sent that out? And maybe get it included in the packet? Because I'm just wondering, because I think when I spoke with her, it was last Wednesday, I told her that sometimes I know it may come the day before?
Yeah.
Because most of my mail from the city usually comes the day before.
I think they would have liked to send them out sooner than we did. I think they were sent out early this week. If it wasn't Monday, it could have been this latest Tuesday. So, again, it's going beyond what our code requirement is, but obviously, we want to notify...
Especially since I'm an immediate resident.
Absolutely. Especially since there is residential use, you know, adjacent to this development parcel. So what I will say is, being that this is within the CRA zone, it does have to go to the CRA board as well as the city council, and we'll continue to notice this project as it moves forward, so that way there'll be ample opportunity for any comments or any questions that come up to be answered, especially, again, because there's residences adjacent to this development.
And one last question about that too. Lighting in like security cameras, I noticed that the police also didn't make that requirement about any type of security cameras, but could the developer kind of talk about the lighting and the security features for the store? I don't suppose he knows that.
We do believe all that. That was part of the recommendations. Yeah. I believe that was, I'm gonna check my correspondence here, but the police department did make those recommendations, and we did agree with those recommendations that they would be followed up to Dollar General.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Were you conscious?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, I, I'm sorry. Mr. DeAndre, and to the staff there, I noticed the fence, it's a long V, out of park. Well, that didn't stay there for security, or is it just there?
No, ma'am, it's currently just there right now.
So people have access to walk through that grass to get to that, because there, the bus stop is right there. So they're gonna get off the bus, and they're gonna walk through that piece of property to get to that store?
Yes, ma'am. The way that it's designed on the site plan, it's kind of like connecting to that actual bus bench there, the new sidewalk look.
What do you mean by the new sidewalk?
Like the new sidewalk that's coming from the actual new building, where the main entrance is.
Okay.
That entrance will be extended out, all the way out to where you see the sidewalk there. So Ms. Shepherd, just for, I guess, a reference point, where you saw that chain-linked fence in that photo?
Okay.
That is approximately where the new building wall will be located.
Wow.
So the current city code requires that the building fronts the street.
Okay.
So if you can imagine or envision where that chain-linked fence is, is gonna be the eastern portion of the building wall itself. And there will be sidewalk connectivity south from the bus stop itself, down to the main entrance, and also around to the parking area.
Okay. Just another question, because I'm kind of frequent that area. Can you go back to that, that particular? Okay, right there where that sign is at, before they put the flowers and the do-hitties there, there used to be a garbage can there. Because in that area, when they get off that bus, all that trash is in that area. So when you're coming off of Silver Beach Road, then ready to go south, Welcome to Riviera Beach, it's gonna be all garbage there, you know? And I'm having some really eerie feelings that that particular area is gonna be trash and looking back, it looks good now because the sign is there. And I think it was a garbage can there, I can't remember off my head right now, but that's the bus stop, that's the sign, and I don't know, I just think it's gonna be a little trashy. I think we deserve a little bit more. I don't know what the plan is. I don't know how you would fix it, but I just think we, we need guarantees that it will not be as trashy as it look at times. I see the ambassadors out there picking up the trash, but soon or later, someone's gonna come in here and say, well, that's not our area, and we're in... well, that's not our area, and we're not supposed to be picking up in that area, so I think you, I like Dollar General, please don't get me wrong, I go way down Lake Worth to shop at that store or Robup Road, I think it is, so I like Dollar General, don't get me wrong, but those areas that I travel, they look really good, I just have a feeling that we're not gonna look as good as those stores down in that area, but just a concern.
Could, uh, I, I get back to the site plan, just comment on that real quick, might be, okay?
Yeah, go ahead.
No, I want to see, kind of like a solution.
Well, I just wanna point out that, that what Jeff is speaking of is this sidewalk right here, which comes out and connects to the city sidewalk right there, and the bus stop is sitting right against it, and the maintenance agreements that, that have been struck with, or, you know, the landscaping maintenance agreements that Dollar General have, will include all of their property, they'll maintain that, you know, they, they wanna make sure that their parking lot's not got trash.
Oh, I get you, I get you.
Yeah.
So, they will maintain?
Yes ma'am.
Okay, okay, that's, that's sort of the solution, but you have it, thank you, I understand, thank you.
I have a question for the applicant, before you sit down.
Okay.
Uh, how does this store, uh, stack up in the scheme of Dollar General stores? Is it, is it a small store, medium store?
It's a new, it's a new prototype, this, this is the first one that I've had the opportunity to be involved with, and they developed this thankfully, I, I've worked for a very long time, I was telling Jonathan the story, I actually worked to try and get them to consider this site for almost three years, two and a half, and, uh, I tried, tried to get their, their standard prototype building fit, and in order to do that, we'd have had to bought houses, got you guys to agree to rezone, it would have been a very complicated process. So, this came out last year, and it, it was developed for urban areas, just like Riviera Beach, so that they could create a presence in areas where the land size, size of the commercial lots oftentimes were smaller than would, would provide for those larger stores, so it is smaller, uh, but these corner entry stores are very efficient, they look bigger, I've, I've gone in the ninety-one hundred square foot store that goes in from the front, you go in from the corner, it, it seems to work better, so I'm interested to see it myself, but it is a new prototype, developed especially for urban areas, so that you can do it on smaller, or, if you want.
Are you saying they haven't built any yet, this is the first one?
No, no, it's not the first one, uh, I haven't been in one yet, I think there are some in the queue ahead of me, some finished, I believe, in Florida, but I have not been inside one yet, this will be the first one completed I've seen. But, uh, if you look at the fixture plan, it's a very efficient space, I think you'll see that they have just about everything in this, that they have the ninety-one hundred square foot store. Maybe a little less shelf space dedicated to paper towels, but they'll be there anyway, you know, that sort of thing.
Okay, uh, no other questions?
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Yeah, Mr. Barber.
What was the significance of the three hundred feet, uh, I guess, minimal or maximal when it came to giving notice to residents?
Generally, um, what staff does is, let's say that it's a special exception, um, and generally, for a special exception, that's the only one by the code that we are actually required to notify, but for this particular one, um, we just decided to notify everyone being that single family residence who are next door, but within the code, it does say three hundred feet.
So, okay, so you went by the code as far as the distance, but you went beyond the code as far as the notification in this?
That is correct.
Okay, uh, but it just seems to me that that wouldn't be enough as far as the distance, I, I'm glad that you went above and beyond the code as far as notifying the residents, but I think that property, I think this store, um, assuming that it did go up, or will go up, would affect many more people in that area than just the, the perimeter, three hundred, three hundred foot. I would like for, uh, I would like to see notice going out, you know, a, a lot further, just for the record. If it's time for comments, I, I have to...
That's it.
Um, I, I don't think it's a great idea for, um, Dollar General to be, be almost the face of the city coming from the north, um, typically, when I think of Dollar Generals, I think of them to be in poor neighborhoods, um, destitute areas, um, areas that, to a large extent, are looked at as, you know, areas that are food deserts, and if we're gonna put a store in that area, um, I would like to see one that might have some vegetables, that might have some food that, you know, supplies some nutrients to the, to the people in the community that surrounds it. Um, in addition to that, it's so close to our waterfront, I think that's prime property, and, you know, I, I don't think it's a great idea for us to put it, put it in that spot, I'm sure there are other areas in the city that we could put it, and it would make a, you know, a, a great impact, yeah, but as far as that area, I'm not sure that this is the, uh, the best idea.
Any other comments?
Mr. Chair, um, if my remembrance served me right, it was years ago, I can't remember, to the applicant, um, if you can remember, I don't know if you guys were in business at that time, but it was at Dollar General here in the city of Riviera Beach, right in the complex where Winn-Dixie is right now, right there where, um, Molina Health Center, and it didn't do well, it didn't do well at all.
Well, you know, I learned that myself just recently, and, uh, I, I don't have any specifics as to how it did or did not do, uh, I, I do know the scrutiny that these things go under at, at the real estate committee level at Dollar General, and if it did not do well, uh, there must have been some reason that they believe, uh, believed caused it to do that, could have been access, could have been visibility, uh, could have been in, if you say it's across the street, if it's in, in what I call inline space, those stores traditionally and typically don't perform as well as the freestanding stores, for some reason, so, you know, I can't comment to why, I didn't even know there was one until Jonathan pointed out, uh, that he had learned that, that there had been one there, but if, if there'd been, if they felt it was market force that caused that, they wouldn't be coming back, because everybody's, uh, their analysts that, that select the targeted areas, the real estate guys, everybody is judged based on the performance of the store, so they, they would not have given me the approval to build a store. Just a few conversations I've had with them, they're pretty excited about the location, they think it's far more accessible than the other side of the street, if that's where the other one was, and, uh, they feel like they have a, a market advantage with the, the location there. It's just easier for the folks coming from, from the residential areas to the west to get to the, to the store. I wonder, you know, I've, I've had stores in other areas where they didn't even wanna talk to me because there wasn't a feeder street coming in from the community, the other side was not qualified for that reason, there's not a street that you can get to the store without having to cross a major material roadway. So, in any event, I, I can't really speak to the specifics of that, uh, I believe there, I knew there was one in Riviera Beach, but I did not notice right across the street.
Absolutely, I remember well, and with that, I think my colleague brought it up, uh, with that traffic coming from north to west with the sign that said, welcome Riviera Beach, I definitely wouldn't wanna come across Silver Beach Road and see that building, um, there. To me, I would, if I was gonna build, I would have built over that area where Winn-Dixie is at, I feel like it's stigmatizing us that this is all we're good for.
What, the Dollar General?
The Dollar General, I like Dollar General, don't, don't get me wrong, and I think the area down in Lake Worth, i- it's right near the water where you can purchase whatever, and I think it's something where you can cross over to the water, I haven't been there in a while, so I can't quite remember, but, and it's nice and clean in there, don't get me wrong, the area is clean, but it just doesn't sit well with me to come here to Riviera Beach, and I have to cross over from North Palm Beach, it was a great city, you know, why don't you pick one in North Palm Beach, I don't understand, why, why come to us? I, I, I mean, I don't get it, I don't get it, when I really realized that Dollar General didn't do well at all, it was a lot of controversy in that store too, yes, I remember well, when I brought it up, I had to remember, and I, it was a lot going on, I, I, I won't care to disclose, but it was a lot going in that store that I really didn't like, and I stopped going.
Well, I, I can't, I can't speak to that either ma'am, and I can't speak to the fact that staff has, has been very thorough in making sure that we're building an attractive building here, I think the building is gonna speak well for, for Riviera Beach, and, uh, you know, it's, uh, it's, uh, requirements in terms of building and, and creating the urban, I, I guess, feel that's just being attempted here because pulling the building closer to the street, creating the street skate, we wanna complement that, we don't wanna take away from it. In terms of whether Dollar General represents any negative stigma, I don't feel, I certainly don't feel that way, like I said, the first one I ever built was right down the street from my parents' house, and, and on land I played on as a kid, uh, they're, they're viewed differently, I guess, in different areas of the country, I, the one in Flagstaff I'm building is not in a area that you would consider, um, you know, uh, you know, an area that you wouldn't wanna be in, it's very, very difficult to find commercial land there, it's difficult to find commercial land in Florida, and, you know, the ones that I've seen in this area are all in inline spaces like I was mentioning, that these feel and work, my experience is they feel and work different, they feel like a freestanding neighborhood store, and it's not in the shopping center.
If I may even add to the conversation, so from, from the staff perspective, I can see, well, let, let me start here, for our zoning code itself, retail use is permitted use, so this is requiring no special exception procedures, this is not breaking any norms, if anything, this could potentially be the first new retail development that has come in under our new CRA codes, and that means it's meeting all the building placement, design standards, it's architectural design standards, things of that nature as well. Being that there hasn't been, you know, not only significant redevelopment, or any redevelopment along this corridor in some time, the fact that the opportunity is now here, I think it's a positive thing, and the other thing I think we need to remember is, there is nothing that guarantees this building will be a Dollar General forever, so this isn't a use approval only for Dollar General, this is a use approval for a retail building that will probably be standing for the next fifty or sixty years, so uses will change over time, additionally, inventory changes over time, you know, Walmart stores have changed what they carry throughout the years, or Target have a super target, so I think that as more people demand and expect produce, stores change what they're carrying in order to accommodate that, so, I guess, I would try to take a bird's eye view of it and, and see what's happened along the corridor, what's planned to happen in the future, and I guess really take a long-term approach view of what this redevelopment could start for the corridor.
Chair.
Yes.
I just have one last comment on it, it just goes back to say what we want for our city, like I mentioned about the jobs and, you know, giving residents first choices at, you know, at, for those jobs, but it, it just goes to show what we want for us, because this is our city, I mean, we don't, we don't have to approve a Dollar General, I know we don't have to say or make that a condition that you hire our residents, but it's your business that you want to bring to us, so what then are you offering us in return, besides, you know, I mean, this is a prime piece of property, um, it will look better than what's there now, because it's an abandoned building, basically, but it's still, it's our city, I don't like when people come here and try to treat us any kind of way because you wanna develop, Lake Park is a couple feet away, you could have easily proposed something in Lake Park, um, North Palm Beach, Palm Beach Gardens, everybody doesn't let everything in their city, I watch other city council meetings, and Walmarts, they don't let Walmarts just come in, they don't let people just come in and do their city any kind of way, even up in Jupiter, so we have to be just as selective what we allow in our city, just like other people, so this is our city, we are residents, and so we can be a little selective if we want, so I just wanna put that out there, because, yes, we are going to start getting very selective.
Any other board comments? Uh, I'd like to, I'd like to, uh, just say that this is really the first development in this, uh, US One corridor north of, uh, north of, uh, Blue Herring in some time. Uh, I know we've gotten out four other vacant pieces of property where the trailer parks disappeared, and I think having anything new go up is a positive thing that may stimulate someone else to make an investment in one of those other pieces of property. I know there's been people that are, uh, talking about, uh, putting some housing in there, and that would complement Dollar General, but Dollar General is a, is a, is a fairly good company, I think we should be looking at it from the standpoint that, uh, that we are getting the, uh, a large company that, uh, that has national exposure, and frankly, is quite successful, I think I was looking at their, uh, annual report, and I think they've increased earnings twenty-five consecutive years in a row, so they seem to know what they're doing, so my, that's my, that's my take on it, so. Uh, having said that, do we have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion that we approve the application for a same-store, uh, Dollar General retail store to be built on the site that's dedicated, thank you.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, Mr. Lassens?
Motion by Mr. Williams, second by Ms. James, settle, Barbara, the second?
No.
Marissa Shepherd?
Could you come back to me, let me think a couple more minutes.
I'm sorry, Marissa Shepherd, you'd have to ask.
I would have to say no.
Julia Swigum?
Yes.
Mariah James?
Yes.
Andrew Canoe?
Yes.
Motion three is two, no.
Okay, uh, item eight, general discussion, no public comments?
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Any correspondence?
Yes, well, you know, I'll say no correspondence.
Okay. Any, uh, comments from board members?
Yes, uh, Mr. Chairman, I would like to thank the staff for getting this applicant in, and I'm hoping that with this company, whether we wanted it or not, that we will start redevelopment broadly, the Broadway is fourteen years behind on redevelopment, remember, don't have a few years to be here to see our city become beautiful again, I'm glad that in the last couple of meetings that we've had, some developers that come in that wanna help improve our city, this is the year that we need to do it, when other developers and other owners see that we are approving some sites to go in the city of Riviera Beach, they're gonna come in, they're gonna help redevelop this city, that's gonna help the homeowners that's been living in this city for over forty years stay here, if you ride around on the west side from Congress to Silver Beach Road, from, uh, to, uh, Blue Heaven, every block in the area got one or two empty houses, why? Because the Phoenix Pistons are passing away, are, they're leaving, and their children don't want... Because the seniors, citizens are passing away, are leaving, and their children don't wanna stay here because they think this city is gonna decay. So in order to keep us going, Mr. Chairman, I'm hoping that those developers see that we, the citizens of Riviera Beach, wanna rebuild our city, and that starts this year. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Worgen. Any other comments?
Yes, I do. Um, I'm all for development, and I'm for the right development. And I feel like as much as we tout that we like to rebuild, we do. We, we need to be selective about who we let come in our city. Because they can say they wanna help us rebuild, they're coming in for their benefit. They're profiting off of us. So it's not just all about development, development, development. It has to be the right development with the right business partners. What are you going to do for us? Because you're getting, you're, you're getting something out of it. You're getting prime location. So it's just not about development, development, development. It is the right development with the right community partners who want to really invest in our city, which means hiring our residents, and that is not a function of our board, but we can make those recommendations. Because like I said, other cities do it all the time, and they, their people show up, and if they don't want it, guess what? It doesn't happen. Other developers will come. Those are my comments. Oh, one more comment. Remember for property owners, March thirty-first is the last day to pay your twenty-fifteen property taxes.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Chair, also, I, I, as I said, I do like Dollar, Dollar, Dollar General. I travel a long way to go to Dollar General. Um, that dive shop, um, that you were asking about, my neighbor is the manager over there. And I've never heard him say anything about a Dollar General being built over, so I'm gonna walk down and ask him, did he hear anything? I'd like to know, because back there where all those houses are, it's gonna affect those residents. And they slid up and slid around about, uh, having people come and, and be a part of the applicant program to get a job there. They didn't come right out and say, well, yes, we'll do this, and that. They were sliding, and I don't like that. It's either a yes or a no. So I have nothing against Dollar General. I think they're a fine company, but they never disclosed to you all that they were here in the city of Riviera Beach. I remember, and it was a little chaos over there. Might have changed because it's been about ten years. But I think that, as they say, if, if we're gonna bring things entire city, well, we're not Y Y here, you didn't want Seven-Eleven. On that end, now you're coming over here with, with, uh, Dollar General. You know, give me a break, you know, you didn't want, uh, uh, Winn Dixie, you know. I, I just don't know. I just don't understand why we can't say enough is enough. As small as Lake Park is, you better not go over Lake Park with this foolishness. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Gagnon, uh, project updates?
Under project updates, I want to take the opportunity to, um, both inform the board that Mr. Colton, this would have been his last meeting as an active board member, um, he decided not to pursue an additional term volunteering on the board. So just wanted to acknowledge the fact that we did do a certificate of appreciation for Mr. Colton, and we'll provide that to him at a later time. Uh, but we honestly want to acknowledge and thank him, and from the people up in the dais, I'm sure you can appreciate it more than anyone that does take hours and effort, and it's appreciated on our end as well. So we just wanted to make that known. We're saddened that Mr. Colton won't be pursuing an additional term.
Yeah, I, I, for the record, I'd just like to say I think he made a valuable contribution for the time that he was, uh, here on the board, so. Any, uh, upcoming meeting?
Our next meeting is technically scheduled for April fourteenth.
What's, what is on the agenda or expected to be on the agenda?
Don't know yet.
Okay. Okay, all right.
Chair.
Yes.
As noted before, I will not be present for that meeting, on April fourteenth, I will be out of town. Thank you.
Okay. Motion to adjourn?
So.